I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, August seventeen, twenty twenty-three to order. Will the Ms. Jazz please take the role?
Trustee Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato? Trustee Pogec?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Trustee Maritato is on Zoom, so just hold on one sec as we try to... Trustee Maritato, can you hear us? Trustee Maritato, can you hear us?
That's right, move on.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. At this time...
Excuse me, sir, I have a... I have to make an announcement. I want everybody to bow your heads and say a prayer for Mayor Linda Jackson. Hopefully that she'll return soon and get through with her injury or illness. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you. As of on August... On Thursday, August third, two thousand twenty-three, the village board, just prior to our board meeting, was advised and became aware of the indictment of Mayor Chadwick Coker. Out of respect for the office of the mayor and our United States system of justice, the village board did not make any statement. However, after numerous inquiries by the public, we feel that the need to comment on Mayor Coker's indictment pursuant to our justice system. Mayor Coker, of course, has the presumption of innocence. However, the mayor has shown that he has propensity to abuse village codes and policies. For example, he will use the village vehicles for his own private purpose. This is in violation to our policy. He is certainly entitled to a reimbursement of mileage on his own vehicle used by... used for village businesses. In effort to safeguard and protect the interests of our village and its residents, we demand that the following safeguards are required. The mayor can only use village equipment, resources, and personnel for village purpose. No village equipment can be utilized for his legal defense. The mayor has a documented history of retaliation against employees. He is... Adminis... admonished not to... engage in retaliation of any village employees. Village employees are protected against a retaliation pursuant pursuant to our policy and any attempt to violate said policy and be reported to the village administrator. Considering the mayor's conduct, including his recent indictment of two felony charges, the best interest of the community will be served by his immediate resignation. We ask that the mayor resign or step aside immediately for the betterment of the village of Glendale Heights and its residents. Also, I would like to add, he called me a racist. He belittled Siddiqui, Mohammed Siddiqui's family, the Sohail Berry family, and the Maritatos' family. Our deputy mayor is more than qualified to lead the way it has shown. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence for the victims of wildfires in Hawaii that has claimed so many lives and destroyed many homes and businesses. Please send your thoughts and prayers to all of those affected by these fires. Let's please take a moment of silence. Community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual Citizens Police Academy. The Citizens Police Academy will be held on Wednesdays from September sixth through November fifteen and features a realistic view of police work taught by Glendale Heights police officers. Enrollment is free and open to citizens eighteen years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, contact the police department's non-emergency number at six three zero two six zero six zero seven zero. On a personal note, I am a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy, and it's a fantastic program. All people, all residents of the village should take part to get an idea as to actually what goes on in the police department. The village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Monday, September eleventh, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles called by a candlelight service at seven fifteen PM on the front steps of the village hall. Please join the village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence in reflection on Patriot Day. Never forget those we lost on September eleventh, two thousand one. For more information, please call Jessica at six three zero nine zero nine five four five nine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Rasheed, District Two.
Stop by Veterans Memorial Park on Thursdays through September twenty-first for the new Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for local produce, crafts, and more for locally sourced vendors. The market runs from nine AM to two PM. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya McCo at six three zero nine oh nine five four five nine. The Glendale Heights Police Department, in partnership with the Serenity House, DuPage Recovery Committee organization, and the community recovery-oriented system of care, is proud to present celebrated life through art and music on Wednesday, August thirtieth, from six PM to nine PM at Veterans Memorial Park. This event is free to attend and will provide education and information regarding the current opioid epidemic and overdose awareness that affects everyone in our communities. For more information, please contact Tanya McCo at six three zero nine oh nine five four five nine.
Garcia Light, please.
Thank you. The village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the fortieth annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September twenty-fourth, from ten AM to three thirty PM. There will be eighteen classes of vehicles on display along with food, swap meet, music, and more. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. GH2O Aquatics on the last day of the season, Monday, September fourth. Postseason pool hours begin August twelfth. The pool will only be open on Saturday and Sunday from noon to five PM. Stop by and cool off in the pool, soak up some sun. For more information on GH2O and the postseason hours, contact Sports Hub at six three zero two six zero six zero six zero. Say goodbye to summer.
Ms. Jazz, please.
School will be back in session soon, and it is very important to obey these limits, especially in school zones, and to remain extra cautious and alert for children while driving through our community. Pay extra attention around hard cars, school crossings, bus stops, and anywhere else children might be present. Students should try and keep a regular route to and from school and never walk alone. Always remember to follow traffic signals and crossing guards. For more information, please contact the police department's non-emergency number at six three zero two six zero six zero seven zero. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is trustee Pat reading all the... or not?
No, he does not have that.
Next is trustee Pogec.
Come on out to Camera Park, December fourteenth through the twenty-fourth for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Elka Inc. and the village of Glendale Heights. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, which will include a special brewery tour. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glandalehighscoctoberfest.com or call three two three five seven seven three eight nine three.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The village of Glendale Heights invites you to the Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, August the twenty-fifth, with a nine AM shotgun start at Glendale Heights Golf Club. This year, the charity class... will be raising funds for the Northern Illinois Food Bank, Family and Faith Food Pantry, the Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program, the FOB Lodge Fifty-two Community Enrichment Fund, the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund, and the Glendale Heights Foundation. If you would like more information and wish to become a whole sponsor or make a raffle prize donation, please call the Glendale Heights Golf Club at six three zero two six zero 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 one eight or the mayor's office at six three zero nine oh nine five three oh three. Also, the next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, October the seventh, at the Center for Senior Citizens from ten AM until noon. Please note there is no coffee and chat in September due to the Labor Day holiday. If you are unable to attend and you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or the village board, please call the village president's office anytime at six three zero nine oh nine five three oh three. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Proclamations. We have the following proclamations. A proclamation to proclaim August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as International Overdose Awareness Day. Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the week of September three to September nine, twenty twenty-three, as National Payroll Week. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Tonight, we have with us the new superintendent of Markort District Fifteen, Ms. Lucila Davila. Ms. Davila, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Board Chair and Board members. My name is Lucila Davila, and I have been hired as the new superintendent of Markort District Fifteen. I started my position July first, so I've been already eight weeks into the position as superintendent of Markort. I look forward to working alongside all of you to continue creating vibrant schools, strong schools, so our students, who are well-deserved of a high level of rigorous education, can continue having that rigorous education. So thank you for having me here tonight, and again, I look forward to working alongside all of you as the superintendent of Markort. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a recognition tonight. Deputy Chief Kelly Derry will be retiring. I would like to call Chief Peppas up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, village board. Today, we'll be recognizing the retirement of Deputy Chief Kelly Derry. Her final walkout and ten forty-two call will be next Thursday, August twenty-fourth. Kelly? With Deputy Chief Derry today, we have her husband, retired police officer from Bloomingdale, Bill, her son Liam, her daughter Mackenzie, her mother Camille, her father, stepfather Douglas, her sister Brittany, and her nieces Delilah and Kendra. I'm going to tell you guys a little bit about Deputy Chief Derry. Kelly grew up in Wheaton, where she graduated as a Wheaton North Falcon. She went on to Eastern Illinois University and graduated with a bachelor's degree in nineteen ninety-five. In April of nineteen ninety-seven, Kelly applied to become a police officer for the Glendale Heights Police Department. When asked on her application for a reason for applying for this position, Kelly wrote, "This is what I want to do for the rest of my life." In September of nineteen ninety-seven, Kelly took the oath of office to become a police officer for the Glendale Heights Police Department, where she began a rewarding and distinguishing career and the start of her dream. Kelly's law enforcement career would span over twenty-six years. Along the way, she earned well over twenty-five commendations. This included a Division Meritorious Award, a Life Saving Award, a department commendation, and the coveted Chief's Award of Merit. Deputy Chief Derry has held numerous assignments during her career. As a patrol officer, she was a DARE instructor, a police bicycle instructor, a CPR instructor, an evidence technician, and a juvenile officer. She also had two stints as a general detective, where she was a homicide investigator and an investigator for the DuPage County Major Crimes Task Force. During her time as a detective, Kelly investigated an astonishing seven homicide cases. In February of two thousand sixteen, she was promoted to the patrol sergeant rank and took on numerous assignments such as the police, community police coordinator, the crisis intervention team coordinator, and a role as an administrative sergeant. She also graduated from the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command during this time. In October of two thousand twenty, Kelly was promoted to her current position as Deputy Chief of Support Operations. Deputy Chief Derry had a passion to properly serve the members of our community. Our department was recognized, due to Kelly's efforts, as one of the first agencies to be part of the One Mind Campaign. This means every one of our officers are crisis intervention trained. She was also an avid supporter in starting our Comfort Dog Program. Kelly is our very first handler for Benjamin. Because of her knowledge, leadership, and care for her fellow officers, Kelly was also influential in implementing our peer support team, which not only assists our police officers, but officers countywide who have experienced critical and stressful incidents. In addition, she also spearheaded our annual mental officer wellness visits. Kelly has instilled teamwork, discipline, and community engagement through her constant coaching and mentoring. Her influence has made a positive difference on our police department and our community. What I'm going to miss most about Kelly is her love for all types of food. I am completely kidding. Kelly is as finicky as I am when it comes to food. Except that she will do anything for chocolate or ice cream. Kelly becomes the dog who's distracted by the squirrel when it comes to chocolate or ice cream. Once she's on that track, you lost her for the day. All kidding aside, the only thing she likes better than ice cream and chocolate is to talk about her kids. She is so full of pride when she talks about Liam and Mackenzie. Those stories are going to be deeply missed. Kelly Derry should be proud of what she has accomplished. She honorably represented the Glendale Heights Police Department and the village of Glendale Heights for the last twenty-six years. We are all lucky to have been part of Kelly's journey, and from all of us at your police department family, congratulations on a fantastic career. We are all proud and humbled to have worked with you and to call you a friend.
Okay, I'm going to make it short, otherwise I'll probably cry. So first of all, thank you very, very much for the opportunity to work here for twenty-six years. It's been an incredible career. I want to thank my family for supporting me and being understanding through all the schedule changes. I had to watch a lot of missed baseball games on Gamechanger. And thank you, Sergeant Minio, I know you're in the back, for letting me go to my mom's house on Thanksgivings occasionally so I could go grab a bite to eat and hurry up and get back to work. So those were my Thanksgivings. To my husband, we've... Since we've had children, we've worked different shifts and different days off, so we are rarely around one another. He would wait up late for me until I got home and vice versa. The last few years, we've actually had the same shift, but we've had, still had different days off. So up until January, we had different days off. But that's allowed us to raise our kids and not use daycare, and it's been pretty awesome. So again, being the police comes with a lot of sacrifices, but because of those sacrifices that I have made and that he has made, it does give me the advantage to now choose to go and stay home and be a mom. I do want to thank everyone that's come before me. I'll be in the back. So appreciate it. And everyone that's come after me. I wish you guys good luck and please stay safe. I've had a lot of opportunities. But this curve is one of a kind, and it's what you make of it. I don't... I'm leaving without any regrets, and I can't wait to stay home and be a mom. Please, please, please stay safe and take care of each other. Thank you.
As an A retirement at the police department, we provide the retired officer with certain gifts. The first one is going to be a plaque, and the plaque is the appreciation for the twenty-six years that Kelly has put in at the police department. Presented to Deputy Chief Kelly Derry, an appreciation for your twenty-six years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department and to the community. In addition, there is a retirement badge, which Kelly will receive. There's your retirement badge. And customary for also retired law enforcement is that they will get their service weapon, their last service weapon. I'm not going to take it out. I'm just going to get the case. And we have a...
Before we go for cake, I'm...
We're not... Hold on, Mayor, somewhere for gifts.
The FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police, represented by Nate Shavchik, seven o'clock.
On behalf of FOP Fifty-two Lodge and the community, we appreciate everything you've done for the community and the police department. Thank you.
And the mayor's going to give a gift as well. At this time, Board and Mayor, I request that we take a short recess for pictures and cake. Kelly's going to shake your hands first, though.
Congratulations, our Deputy Chief Derry, on a wonderful career. I wish you the best in your retirement. We will recess briefly for cake and pictures. Is there a motion to recess? I need motion of trustee Light and trustee Schmidt. This meeting is recessed. I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. We go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board and agenda items? Anyone from public? Yes. Please state your name and address.
Mr. Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights. First of all, with regards to Deputy Chief Kelly Derry, I want to thank her for her service. She was a DARE officer when my son was growing up in District Sixteen, and her work was very appreciated and things like that. With regards to Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your service. Keep on fighting. You've got a couple more years left. This village board has been against you since day one. You were not the one that filed a lawsuit again against the former... Excuse me, I'm talking... It's... Where the... It wasn't you, Mayor, that filed a lawsuit against the previous administration, so why are they blaming you for winning by two votes? I have no idea. You've done a lot for this village. A lot of people have skated away from paying for their village stickers on their cars, but we're getting... I'm seeing some compliance right now, thanks to my being able to work with the chief, not having a mayor over him that's going to quash that. We... The previous administrations spent a hundred thousand dollars on a smoking room. Most of these people on this board here overspent. The money that we are not getting this year because of the trustees on this board, we almost did not get the cannabis monies. It was a three-three tie. The mayor put in the final vote. We are getting the money for the cannabis. We're not getting the money for cricket this year because a number of the village trustees... because somebody's relative did not get the contract and throw a temperature...
Mr. Epstein, I'm going to stop you right there. I've given you a little bit of leeway because there was a comment regarding the mayor, but you're getting way off track. That it's not an agenda item anymore that you're talking about.
Well, the thing is, it is an agenda because there were... This goes back years. We're finally getting contracts that are requiring to be bid out and not given to somebody because you're related to somebody.
Again, it's not an agenda item.
Well, anything that came from the statement from the village board, I believe falls under that because of the fact it is something that's... And there's also attitude with some of these. Mr. Pogec, you said you weren't a racist, but I believe you admonished somebody, one of your constituents, and called him, I believe it was an idiot, but yet you didn't resign or even apologize publicly out in this forum. I think you're the one that needs to have resigned and should still resign. And what else to... Oh, we got rid of the elephant with regard... And what else to, oh, we got rid of the elephant with regards to the banquet hall at the Gwynneys.
At this time, if the board wants to make a motion, they can make a motion to stop his...
This is the mayor's.
Make a motion to stop.
I make a motion, you stop.
You can make your comments during the COW.
I'll second it.
No.
I would actually ask that any other comments related to the public statement made at the beginning of the meeting occur at the cow, so we can continue with the business part of the meeting?
But, but your thing here for the cow says, "Public comment of committee recommendations only."
And afterward, there's one for any time.
Well, you, you blocked it from being stated at that time. So I'm bringing it up here right now because it is part of the agenda. Anything that falls under petitions and communications is part of the agenda. The only other thing I have to say is the banquet hall has finally got a contract. We're not losing hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Next, anybody from... Please state your name and address.
That's Mike's job at Pope Wayne Avenue. Mike, chief, my question's to you on consent agenda item number three. After that last meeting, I really looked into it a lot, and I, I hope the board really considers banning this because, A, what was the point of going through all the, you know, everything we went through to get a legitimate cannabis dispensary? They're saying that these products, that the levels of cannabis in them is much higher than stated on the, on the containers, and that they also are finding them laced with fentanyl because there's no regulation. I'm not saying people should be pro or con. It's your choice what you believe in about cannabis, that's your own personal choice. But having something that dangerous sitting on the smoke shops shelves and the 7-Eleven shelves and completely unregulated, everything I read about it is horrible. So I commend you guys for looking into it, and I hope you are gonna ban it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody from public? No? Okay, none. You have the concert agenda before you. Word, acting Village Administrator Doug Flint, please give the concert agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
One, approval of regular board meeting minutes of August 3rd, 2023. Two, approval of the accounts payable listing of August 17th, 2023, in the amount of $4,672,367.82. Three, ordinance to amend Chapter 11 entitled Reserve of Title IV entitled Business and License Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, Illinois. Unlawful to sell, offer for sale, give away, or deliver product containing THC. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a fiber internet connection agreement between Astound Business Solutions LLC and the Village of Gwendolles Heights. Five, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the Laser Printer Maintenance and Supply Agreement binding between Marco Technologies LLC and the Village of Gwendolles Heights. Six, a motion to approve pay request number one to Hoher Construction Incorporated for the North Avenue I&amp;I Repairs Project Phase II in the total amount not to exceed $214,667.26. Seven, a motion to approve pay request number one to Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the Mill Pond Lift Station Improvement Project, total amount not to exceed $88,047. Eight, motion to approve pay request number one to Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the Water System Resilience Upgrade Project, total amount not to exceed $13,490.10. Nine, motion to approve pay request number one to Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Screening Wash Process Project in the total amount not to exceed $82,483.20. Ten is approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve the concert agenda? Who was first over here? Okay, I will take first one, I'm a light, and then from this side left, Pojek. Second, discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sidikni?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratao?
He is not here.
You can skip, skip.
The concert agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, number one. An ordinance amending Chapter 2 entitled Rules and Definitions and Chapter 3 entitled Administration and Enforcement of Title 11 entitled Zoning Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 entitled General Zoning Regulations of Title 11 entitled Zoning Regulation of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Number three, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 entitled Off-Street Parking, Chapter 6 entitled Signs, and Chapter 7 entitled Amortization of Title 11 entitled Zoning Regulation of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Number four, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 entitled Residence Districts, Chapter 10 entitled Commercial Districts, Chapter 11 entitled Office, Business Park, and Industrial Districts. Chapter 12 entitled Special Districts, and Chapter 13 entitled Plant Unit Development of Title 11 entitled Zoning Regulation of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Number five, an ordinance amending Chapter 1 entitled General Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 2 entitled Administration and Enforcement, Chapter 3 entitled Plans and Procedures, Chapter 4 entitled Designs, Standards, and Chapter 5 entitled Required Improvement of Title 12 entitled Subdivision Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Number six, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1 entitled Plans Commission of Title 2 entitled Boards and Commissions of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Seven, an ordinance to amend Section 4-2-2 entitled License Fees Schedule based upon Use of Chapter 2 entitled License Fees of the Title 4 entitled Business and Licenses Regulations of the Municipal Code of the Village of the, of the ordinance, of, ordinance of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Eight, an ordinance to amend Section 10-14A-1 entitled Definitions, Section 10-14A-2 entitled Licensing Requirements, and Section 10-14A-5 entitled Inspection Required and Reinspection Requirement of Article A entitled Licensing and Inspection of Single Family Dwellings of Chapter 14 entitled General Licenses and Permits Provisions of Title 10 entitled Building Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Gwendolles Heights, LNI, first reading. Nine, a resolution, a resolution of authorization for the OS, OSLAD Program Simon Property RES 2023-R-89. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-R-89? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second? Trustee Schroder? Discussion?
Mayor, if I could have a moment? Before we go ahead and vote on this resolution, I wanted to bring Doug Fair from Hitchcock Design Group to kind of walk through where we're at with the process and kind of show everybody in the public what we're looking to do on this property that we designated as the Simons' property. It's just off at the end of Spruce, but I think that Doug, in his presentation, can kind of show everybody where things are. And at the end, and then I'll speak a little bit about what you're going to be doing in this resolution.
Yes, question, okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Keith. Good evening, everybody. So just want to give you a kind of a high-level overview of the proposed plan for the Simons' property. One thing to note during the presentation is this is very conceptual in nature. This is not saying this is specifically what the, the plan is going to be implemented and, and built from. This is strictly for the sake of submitting a state-funded grant through the OSLAD program due at the end of the month. There will be multiple points if awarded funding, when we go through final design process, when we're actually developing the plans that we build from, when this will be brought back to the board to share updates and gain feedback from. So with that, I'll launch into this quick presentation here. The agenda you see up on screen will be highlighting, kind of going over the existing site, a little bit of the specifics on the OSLAD grant, the proposed plan, and the grant components within, and then, as Keith said, opening up for discussion at the end. So if you can see that on screen, this is the Simons' property. This is in the southeast portion of the village. This is an underserved area, and you can see bordered by Spruce to the north and the Great Western Trail to the south. So just some, some shots of the existing site. As you can see, heavily vegetated, kind of overgrown, not really utilized for outdoor public recreation. So with the grant, it's an online grant submittal. We no longer have to drive the physical applications down to Springfield, which is nice. These are due, like I said, at the end of the month, August 31st, so two weeks from today. The review period, depending on the amount of applications they get, typically varies from four to six months. And they typically, these grants are due usually in late summer months and fall, and they are awarded in quarter one of the following year. So look for that, late January, early February of next year. From that, there's a two-year completion deadline from the, the date of the contract, contract execution. So there's a little bit of time between the awards announcement in quarter one of next year and then when that, that grant is executed, when you will enter into an agreement with the state. So we're anticipating that would likely start, you know, late spring, early summer of 20, next year, 2024. So the estimated completion date to do final design, engineering, permitting, bidding, and constructing the project to 100% completion is two years from that date. So that would be summer of 2026. This is, this again, like with Camera Park, is a 50-50 match grant opportunity. So the maximum for that is 600,000. So this project has been designed to maximize that. So the, the budget for the project you're about to see is 1.2 million. 50% of that provided by the state, 50% of that would be funded by the village.
Or we could lower the property taxes.
Right. So this is the proposed plan that you see on screen here. Again, very conceptual in nature. So part of that will be utilizing some of the existing clear space for the proposed improvements, which would be a neighborhood-sized scale playground, picnic shelter, small parking lot off of Spruce, about 10 spaces, Bago toss, cornhole, bags, whichever you call it. Bago is kind of the term that we've kind of universally adopted across the board here. Some natural turf playmounds next to the playground, and I'll, I'll provide a little bit more detail and kind of some zoomed-in images of that as we go through here. Off to the west and kind of the heavily vegetated area, thinking that would be a good spot for a nature walking loop, so some educational opportunities and the use of some native plantings and some vegetation to highlight some of the existing site features. We have two, we have one regional trail connection at the very southeast corner of the site. That scores very well during the review, the review period, having a connection to a large regional trail. And then also noting on the west, a potential future trail connection as well for the, the later development of the site. So this is the playground. This would be all, the surface for this would be engineered wood fiber or mulch. The, the intent for this is to be a neighborhood-sized scale playground, not near the size as Camera, so a little bit less than that just for, for scale or kind of bookmarking. And this would likely be kind of a nature, nature theme, you know, consistent with the, the site surroundings. And then kind of just backing up as you're coming in off of Spruce, if I can go back. The intent is to be the playground located kind of at the end of the drive as a focal point, kind of leading you into the space, kind of greeting you as you're coming into the newly created park space. So these are some, some, some ideas, some potential, what the playground might look like. This isn't saying specifically what it is. On the left, you have a more contemporary, kind of modern-looking, you know, play structure. And on the right, you have a more nature-themed use of equipment. Next to the playground would be a picnic shelter. An example of, of kind of the size of the scale that we're looking for that was shown on the plan here. Some game tables within. All of these are grant components that will score well. These are recreational components. So what I'm going through here are, are, will, will score well during the review process. The natural turf playmounds next to, next to the playground, again, utilizing the site's topography to create kind of a naturalized play environment, which will cater nicely to the playground. Example image of that there. The nature walking loop, kind of through the vegetated area, will be all asphalt surfacing with some, some educational nodes, so some interpretive educational signage spread throughout, talking about the, you know, environmental education with a couple of bench seating areas along the path. About a quarter mile in a, a total loop from start to finish. So a shot of that there. It's at the corner of Second and Spruce. The, the very southeast portion of the village.
It's, it's offshore wood. Yeah. Yes, it's behind shore, it's, it's offshore wood, behind Menards. Evergreen and Spruce, Evergreen, Shorewood, Spruce.
Bago toss or cornhole, a, a picnicking-type amenity. So we've located that close to the picnic shelter. Do you see an example of that here? Some educational items that I, I highlighted, spread throughout. We've got three of these nodes. Again, this is a, a grant component that will score nicely during the DNR review. Example of some signage, some of this was, was included in the Camera Park design as well. And with that, I'll open it up to any comments or questions that you have from me or Keith. They'll just connect to it.
Correct.
Okay.
Keith, are we getting, are we getting the dinosaur?
The theme of the park will come later, so that'll be something that we'll look into. We've had some suggestions of dinosaurs. I'm thinking sharks at this point. So they've asked if you have a question to come up here so it can be heard on the P.A. system.
Or if you just want to repeat the question.
Or I can repeat it, if you want to yell it.
I was just wondering...
Please state your name and address.
I don't want to say your address. No, you know, you know. I'm Martika Francis King. Thank you. So is this, we would have to put in a million approximately?
No, the plan is that...
Is it free to the taxpayer?
It's, it's 1.2 million dollars. It would have to be funded 50-50.
Okay, so about more than half a million.
About 600,000.
600,000 that could go to property taxes? Maybe instead of this idea, lower our property taxes?
We can't hear you, speak to the mic, I can't hear you.
Lower our property taxes? You know, because we're getting all this extra money, right, David? From all these marketing campaigns? You know, right? I think we did, we made $3 million. I saw in the last report for a couple of years, you know? So I think we'd be, that's my humble suggestion.
So just so that, you know, this area is actually underrepresented by parks, and so that's one of the reasons why we chose this, is it's an area that currently doesn't have a park for the residents of that area?
Oh, well, we have quite a few parks. In fact, I would highly, I want to compliment our parks manager Vince and Matt and Oscar. They are doing a tremendous job with Camera Park. We've got parks all over, don't we really? I mean, you, you gentlemen, ladies, know, we're well parked. But we are overpriced, you know, in terms of what the people of the town can really afford at this point, given...
Ma'am, did you have any more questions?
Uh, well, any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your presentation.
Another question?
I'm Joe, I'm at 155 East Shubert. I kind of agree with the park, man. It helps the community with the kids. And like you said, there's not really too many parks down that way. I'll try to keep them out of trouble and give them some little scenery to look at and be able to play. Maybe not go on towards other things that are venturing out this way, too.
Anybody else?
Keith B. over here. I live in a community with six hundred units. We have no park. So I'd like to know, yeah, when are we gonna, you know, get that park done as well?
At this time, there's nothing planned in that area. I will also say, though, that I don't believe we have any parkland that we own in that area.
Hey, at Pope Lane Avenue, you know what? This park is amazing and everything. Doug, our Doug, the other Doug, and Keith, if you were at the presentation, it was perfect. And everything they presented to us was amazing. This park is gonna be awesome, especially with the dinosaurs. No sharks are not allowed, Keith. You get them at the pool, we get dinosaurs over here. But you guys did a fantastic job. Wish more people had come out and, you know, they could have put their two cents in then. But it was, you know what, it's not your turn, bye. So you guys did a fantastic job, and I really hope the board approves this because, you know, yeah, you could lower taxes, but six hundred thousand is not gonna do anything towards our taxes. And you've had this land for almost twenty years, and we haven't done anything with it. So it's time, and especially if the state will pay for half, but I think that's amazing.
Thanks, Tim.
Anybody else from public, President?
Do you add to the parking lot?
They did not do any additions at this point, because we want to make sure that the number fits within. But it's something that obviously, when we come back and we actually do the design, it's something that we can look at.
But we're still gonna look at that.
We're gonna, so you actually perfectly led me into my last part of this, which is, so just so that the board is aware, what we're asking you to do today is to agree to support this project if we get awarded. That's all this resolution does, is ask for that. It's a requirement of the project. This gets, I will have it signed, and it goes into our application form that goes into the state here at the end of the month. So that's what you're voting on.
Is there anything else, Keith?
That's it.
Alright, so there's a first and there's a second on the motion to approve.
Who made the motions?
Trustee Light. Second?
Trustee Schroder.
I'll second it. Schroder seconded, we need a vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Trustee Schreit?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Definitely.
The motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash eighty-nine is approved. We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? There's none. Is a motion to adjourn, a motion to adjourn this meeting, today's meeting? Trustee Schmidt and.
Motion to adjourn.
Right.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schroder, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
So noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Okay, Mike, alright, Mike, what is it?
Chester's first.
Chester, what do you want?
Uh, F-down broadband, the cable.
Cable? Mike?
Me, apology.
What'd he say?
Apology.
Okay. Yes.
Clarification.
Okay. Alright, that's it, very good. Moving on. Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on a committee recommendation only? No, alright, that will.
No, Tika, this is not your time. This is, we have three things up from plan review for, Plan Commission for Committee Recommendations. Once that over, public comment on anything else will happen.
Alright, committee recommendations, Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use to allow a motor vehicle body shop and a conditional use to allow outdoor storage of motor vehicles in a C-three general commercial district for Hawks Auto Collision LLC. It's D-b-a Hawks Auto Body and Collision located at nine oh eight East North Avenue. Is there a motion to move this to the board with a recommendation to concur? Yes, Trustee Light?
So moved, moved to the board with a recommendation.
Same.
Okay. Discussion? None. A roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
President Coker?
Yes.
Alright, number two, a Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use to allow outdoor storage of commercial vehicles in a one-light industrial district for Paul M. Brown and Associates. This is a two-man and a truck located at five twenty Wendy Point Drive. Is there a motion to move this to the board with a recommendation to concur? Yes, Bill?
So moved.
Chester?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? None. A roll call vote.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meratalo? I'm starting. Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright. Number three, a Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve an application for an amendment to the conditional use for a planned unit development ordinance nineteen eighty-nine dash twenty-one to allow a forty-four thousand square foot building addition with exceptions to both the underlying ordinance and zoning code. For some, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this correctly. Pardon?
Sumitomo.
Okay, Sumitomo Machine Corporation. It's Sumitome Drive Technology located at one seventy-five Lake Drive. Is there a motion to move this to the board with a recommendation to concur? Yes.
Second.
Mohammed?
So moved.
Second.
Alright. Discussion? None. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Alright, public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Mike, there are saying five minutes, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, my name is Michael Anaveros, for those of you who don't know me, Glendale Heights resident for over thirty years. Let me begin by extending my heartfelt best wishes to Ms. Linda Jackson for a swift and complete recovery. Your dedication and service as former village president has left a lasting impact on our community. As you navigate this journey towards better health, please know that my thoughts and prayers are with you. Police Chief George Pappas. I want to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation for your unwavering commitment to your role as police chief, especially in the face of recent opposition challenges. Leading the police department is demanding responsibility, requiring not only professional expertise, but also strong leadership skills. Your ability to navigate complex situations, make tough decisions, and uphold the values of justice and safety is truly commendable. It's evident that you have been a subject of extreme opposition and criticism by certain individuals that I cannot name in your efforts to maintain law and order. Despite these challenges, your consistent commitment to following the letter of the law, promoting transparency, and fostering community relationships demonstrates your genuine concern for the well-being of both your department and the citizens you serve of Glendale Heights. Your resilience in the face of the adversity is an inspiration to us all. Your ability to focus on the greater good, even with faith with an opposition, no matter who they are, is a true representation of your character and commitment to your role. As a member of this great community, Glendale Heights, I am for one grateful for your service and the positive impact you are making. Thank you. Mr. Coker? Please resign. I know, I know you better than that, and I know you will not. A person of your character having no professional ethics, no morals, it's all about me persona, stipends, and unlimited use of taxpayer-funded credit cards is why you won't resign. You have undermined the integrity of the role of village president, you betrayed our trust, and acted in a manner subversive of the rule of law and justice at the expense of the Glendale Heights citizens. You've been indicted by DuPage County Grand Jury for allegedly filing police reports on two separate occasions. These are considered felonies. So I'd like to discuss the indictment as it relates specifically to the village of Glendale Heights. The legal process. The indicted village president will have the opportunity to go through the legal process, including the trial if the case proceeds that far. Only, and if an individual is convicted of a felony, can he or she be removed from office. There is no recall initiative in the state of Illinois. Public perception. The indictment has tarnished our great village. Public pressure might persuade the village president to step down. But to avoid further damage to our town's image, he would rather stay, so I would say him to be removed from office is highly unlikely. The ability to govern, and this is key for all of us here, standing in front here and those sitting over there. It's a great concern for the village president's ability to fulfill his duties while facing legal proceedings. As we can see by the relationship between the board and the village president, there is a genuine concern about his ability to effectively govern. Where do we go from here? Party and political support. The village president's Democratic Party and colleagues are already weighing in on your indictment. My sources tell me that charges and indictments are damaging their reputation and have distanced themselves as a result. It's like having a sandbox, but no sand to play in. Presumption of innocence. Having said all this, it's important to remember that every individual is presumed innocent until proven guilty, so we will have to wait and see. To the Village Board of Trustees, what assurances can you give the residents of Glendale Heights that no taxpayer monies will be used for his legal defense? Secondly, how much have we paid to date on legal fees dating back to fiscal twenty twenty-two to present? And what efforts are being made to remove access to stipends and credit cards? Lastly, I want to bring to your attention a matter of great importance that involves the reputation and well-being of two of our well-respected residents. I would even categorize them as victims, in this case, as a result of this indictment and Chadry Kokar's frivolous lawsuits. The victims are not Chadry Kokar, as he would lead you to believe. No, it's Mohammed Siddiqui, his wife, his family. It's Sohal Badi, his wife, and family. These individuals who are being wrongly accused have demonstrated their dedication to our village through their active involvement in local government, community projects, charitable efforts, and their overall commitment to the betterment of our society. Their character and integrity have been unfairly tarnished by false accusations, causing distress and hardship. I urge you, Chadry Kokar, to consider the significant impact that such accusations can have on the lives of our residents. I kindly request that you take immediate steps to publicly acknowledge the wrongful accusations, accusations, and issue a formal apology to the affected individuals. In the spirit of unity and progress, I believe that it's crucial for us to stand together as a community in times of adversity. By addressing this issue. Okay, I'll just say one thing. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Let me, let me respond to Mike. Let me respond to.
My five minutes are up, sir.
Mr. Mike, on scars and stipend you mentioned. I'm not stealing village money, number one. I'm not using village property for my personal use. Number three, I am a very honest, transparent person, and the changes I am, the changes I am bringing, nobody can stop from last, over twenty years. That's on the table now, you know? People know and they love it, and I will keep it working for the welfare of my residents, period. She's the wife of Trustee Siddiqui. You can watch her smile, laughing. Okay, so, Amir, sorry.
Okay, we have.
Sorry, Badi's wife.
I have to, I have to address this, Mr. Frank. Just for the record, my wife is not even in Chicago, she's in DC with my bitch. So he better need to understand who's my wife and who's my wife's sister.
Because John Ice had Badi's wife, you know, what's wrong with that?
You better know how to speak.
You will learn how to, you will learn how to speak, you know? Yes.
Please let not speak out of turn. When you, someone else has the floor, let them have the floor and add afterwards. Yes, please state your name.
Farah Bari, Glendale Heights. I'm a resident of this town more than thirty years. As a matter of fact, since I arrived in the United States, I've been living here. I did lots of volunteer work for this amazing town. So my, I demand Coker to resign, not because of his indictment, but because of his disrespectful behavior towards women. He's suing me, he's harassing me and my family just because he don't like my husband. Okay? And I was never a part of this, or I was, I was never involved in these shenanigans. So the talk was between men to men, but he just pulled, pulled me wherever he could. So at this point, I demand him to resign, so he cannot make more damages to our town. Thank you so much.
There anyone else that would like to?
Jake's the policy Glendale Heights. I also demand that you resign. My family's been in this village since nineteen sixty-seven, and you're a disgrace to this village. You want to act like a clown and run it like a circus, that's why your face is a clown. Resign.
Hello, my name's Olivia. I've been a resident of this town for over nine years now. I am here because I'm facing an issue with my neighbor's driveway. My neighbor and I have what I would, it's not a shared driveway technically, because our property, our driveways touch, but his property, my driveway is six feet wide, and his driveway touches my driveway, leaving me barely any room to be able to open my door. I've been informed by my neighbors that my property was renovated about twenty-five to thirty years ago, so I actually have a detached garage that goes back, and most people have an attached garage. So whoever lived there before me twenty-five years ago remodeled the home to where my living room is now what used to be a garage. And whoever, I don't know if the city allowed it or what happened, but my driveway is six feet wide. So that's barely enough room for someone to be able to open the door and get out of their car. And the city has allowed my neighbor, has granted my neighbor a permit to rebuild their driveway. The contractor approached me a few days ago and informed me, he said, hey, do you know that you're not going to be able to go in and out of your driveway anymore? So your car that is parked in the back needs to come out, or you're not going to be able to remove it. And they said, I was not aware of that. My neighbor and I are very friendly, but I didn't even know that was, you know, that that was going to be an issue after the remodel. So he said to me, we're lifting your neighbor's driveway fourteen inches high. So he said, um, I'm letting you know, I think you really need to get someone from the city to come out here and check your neighbor's driveway and your driveway. The way the driveway is now going to be, is going to be fourteen inches high, and he said, and my concern is safety. He said, I think when the temperatures drop, you face the potential risk of your neighbor's car colliding into your car or into your house. I talked to my neighbor, I tried to explain, hey, is there any way that you guys could just do it a little bit further down? And my neighbor's just not budging. He said, it's within my property line. I did talk to the city. I talked to whoever allows the permits and was told that it's within their property line, they're allowed to do that. But again, my concern is the safety of my family. And I would, um, it, it's very concerning to me that they would allow someone to go forward with rebuilding a garage that is going to prevent me from accessing my detached garage. I understand that this was allowed years ago, but there has to be some type of solution, and I was told that I need to take some civil action against my neighbor, which, um, if I don't have any other recourse, I guess that's what I'm going to have to do. But I would think that the city would be concerned about my safety and would have someone go out there and check what's happening. The contractor approached me twice already and said, look, I think this is a horrible idea. I've told your neighbor it's a horrible idea. The city did not let your neighbor build towards the house, but they told me that in a few days, they were going to be able to build towards the house. My neighbor still is not willing to build that way, and I understand it's on the property line, but I'm concerned that I'm not even going to be able to open the car, like the door to my car. Um, and I would think that if this was happening to anyone else, you guys would be just as concerned for the safety of your family. I'm a paralegal, and I've talked to my attorneys, and they've told me that, you know, if we have to take civil action, that perhaps we should move forward with a temporary restraining order to stop the work from being done and have the city come out and check the potential dangers. I would hate to take civil action, like I, I really would hate that. I've been living there. I don't want any problems with my neighbor. But I really am begging that someone please come out and just check what's going on. It doesn't make any sense that whoever allowed this permit, um, is going to let them move forward and not allow me to access a detached garage. So again, I'm just here asking everyone to please consider my situation and have someone go out and just see the problem it's going to cause for me not being able to access my driveway. Or in the future, who's going to want to purchase a home that they can't even like drive through to their driveway? So again, thank you for your time, and I really appreciate some-
Olivia, what is your address?
My address is two ninety-one East Wrightwood Avenue.
East what?
Wrightwood, and my neighbor is two eighty-seven East Wrightwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have somebody look into that.
Hi, Cheryl From, Fullerton Avenue. Uh, in regards to your resignation, that you should do. Number one, don't embarrass this town. It's sad that you manipulated police officers and lied. Their job is hard enough. People don't want to be police because of the disrespect people give. But when somebody has power like you do, sir, and you turned around and disrespect police, that you should just resign out of respect for the police department and what you put them through. It's not fair. You manipulate people, you did it to one man when he ran for office. You made him believe he was going to win. You told him that the Democrat Party was backing him and doing polls on him, and it didn't happen. So when he lost his election, he kind of lost his little way and threatened to blow up this building. So out of respect for, you say you're an honest man, you should resign for the sake of this town. We don't need any more disrespect or people making fun of us. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Pete Knoll. I've been a resident since nineteen sixty-four in Glendale Heights. I would like to commend the board for their stance that they took at the top of this meeting today. I would also like to commend the police department for their very professional handling of this matter. I also would like to see our current village president resign. I think it would be in the best interest of the village. Speaking as a member of the local Democratic Party, I can assure the village president that he does not have the support of the local Democratic Party. I am a precinct committee man and also the community relations director for the Blueingale Township Democrats. And I can assure you that he does not have the support of the Democratic Party. Thank you for your time.
If there's no one else that has a comment, we will continue to go on, aight?
I think you have somebody there.
Hi, my name's Joe. I'm at, uh, one fifty-five East Uwer. I'm interested trying to get a, or I got somewhat of a permit for a driveway, and I'm trying to build onto that as well. And with all the, uh, the new codes that are coming in with the three-foot setback and everything, I got grant filed it in right before that, but part of my extension part is saying that it has to be a minimum of nine feet, but in the older part of the community, we don't have nine-plus feet from the edge of our house to our property line. And now with the new three-foot setbacks, it's even less now, so I'm just looking to maybe have you guys look into something to try to clarify some of this and make it easier for people to be able to extend their driveways out. Because the older parts, you know, I got a kid, I got my wife, me, I got a work truck, and I got a, a trailer and stuff too. These houses aren't meant, they're not big enough for growing families, and when you try to do something, it's kind of getting shot back when you're trying to improve your property. So just maybe try to look at some, to try to correct some of that ordinances for driveway extensions and clarify what it is an extension and what is actual driveway. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Doug, is there someone that could take care of that?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been working with the, uh, the individual, so, uh, over the last several days, so.
Aight, thank you.
Have you worked with Olivia also?
Yes, I have. This is one of those situations where Olivia, who has a six-foot driveway, can't get into her rear garage, but this gentleman wants a six-foot driveway so he can park his car.
Would that be considered a driveway? The driveway did, what goes from the house to the garage? Then driveway extension, it was off to the left side of the driveway that leads to nowhere but served no purpose but, but for parking, as per the definitions.
I wouldn't be able to even park two vehicles in my driveway. It was just one vehicle, and I wouldn't even be able to fully open my door. I would literally, I'm pregnant, so right now, even being able to get out, I would literally have to like climb myself. And it just doesn't make any sense to me, not just that, but I meant safety issues. The contractor explained to me that he thinks it's a safety issue, that he's told me that he thinks it's a safety issue. Because my driveway elevation is so low, it's terrible, that her car, it's like, it's not. I was just safely there, then the, the park lighting, my, my kids, I'm there at home. Who would want to have their neighbor's car come collapsing here? More than sufficient space for them to build, to operate.
All right, he'll continue to work. All right, thank you. All right. If there's no one else, we're going to continue on. All right, um, Chester, you said something about cable?
Oh, yeah, uh, cable, we got problems there. I talked to Mike before. It's been a month, no, nothing has been done. They got wires running across college with little flags hanging, so nobody can, well, so darn high. Also over by Wyatt, they taped into a, a cable box, ran the wire over the creek, through the bushes, through the trees, into a house about almost seventy-five yards on Harding. Who owns that property between Wyatt and Harding? The village own that, the, the creek, everything, the trees?
Yeah, I would say, I would-
So they're in violation, in my opinion.
Well, they're supposed to bury it, right?
Well, they haven't been done that. They haven't done that yet. Somebody's got to rattle their cage real fast, even on college. That thing has been like that since probably early spring. And nothing has been done about that. It, that company is horrible to deal with.
Chester, I had a same issue in my, one of my residents that was literally was hanging from a tree uh, along the ground, laid there for, it's laid there for months, and working with Mike Fodorovik, he was very aggressive with them, uh, offered to, um, he was going to start fining them if they didn't get it taken care of. And I gotta say, within a couple of weeks, I had it resolved after he had started-
Well, Mike's been working on this too, but it's nothing being done.
It really, really slow this morning.
We'll, we'll follow up again, and we have a new account rep for a sound, um, that just came on board a couple of weeks ago, so we'll, we'll reach out tomorrow.
Send him to my house, one time.
No, I'm not going to do that.
Please, send him to my house one time. He will hear an earful from me.
Aight, thank you. All right, who's next? Apologies?
Uh, that would be me. Um, I gotta say, uh, with all the stuff that's been going on within the village as of lately, it's been kind of, um, it's been hectic, it's been, it's been embarrassing, it's been, it's been horribly awkward with, um, friends within the communities, with, uh, between all the DuPage County reps and people that I have dealt with. And all the things going on, and with all the embarrassments, one thing I haven't heard from the mayor was a single solid apology. I didn't hear an apology from lying to the police on the investigator so many times. I didn't hear an apology for using a village car to turn himself in, to be arrested. Taking a car downtown, a village car downtown, receiving a parking ticket on it, never heard apology for that. I never heard apology for attacking Marie, calling her a thief, for what she was found not guilty, still no apology. For yelling at a senior, a senior citizen who is the backbone of our community doing many things. You yelled at her and told her that you didn't like the way she, or you didn't like the way she was talking to you because she was yelling at you by the way you treat people, about the way you treat people, which was, it needs an apology. For wasting the taxpayer's money, I never heard an apology to the tune of sixty thousand dollars and counting in lawsuits, investigations on board members and their families, all frivolous and wasted, all sixty thousand dollars and counting. Uh, most of all, to the people in Glendale Heights for wasting two years of positive growth that we could have had and could have taken care of so much stuff. Never once did I ever hear apology for any one of those things. And I do believe each and every one of those things need a solid apology, and I would ask for that as of now.
Mr. Light, Trustee Light, sixty thousand dollars you mentioned lawsuit, that is because of board, because of you, because trustee members of, of the board, number one. Number two, hundred twenty thousand dollar bid came for cricket grounds, and this board, they did not give because they love one person, Sohail Badi. They did not give, it's hundred twenties, lot of money, hundred twenty thousand bid came for those field which have been given to one person for twenty-one year.
Yes, sir, no, no.
Their favorite person. Second, you mentioned about, you know-
No apologies? No apologies.
For what? For you?
No, not for me, for senior-
I love my, I love my resident.
Resident.
I love my resident. I'm, I'm, I'm changing the village, I'm reforming. And you mentioned about, uh, a, a ticket, you know. Ticket I got, I paid fifty dollar, I paid from my own, own private, my personal card, you know, I paid that. I have receipt, I gave the receipt to, uh, Mr. Bill, Director Finance, he has, he should have. Uh, banquet hall, we lease it out, we are saving five hundred thousand dollars for rest of the life. That was, that was for neglected residential money, uh, our resident, public money was dumped into that. Let me speak, it's my turn.
Mike, he has-
Let me speak, you know. You cannot interrupt, you know. That's a tendency you have, you know. A five hundred thousand dollar will be saved for rest of my life and rest of the future, you know, of this village. Unless these people board, they again don't lease, you know. That is-
The expanded community is behind you, Mayor.
Let, let me, please. Smoking, smoking, uh, please let me speak.
You're out of order.
Please, please let me speak. Smoking room, hundred twenty, more than hundred twenty thousand dollar was spent. This board did not open their mouth.
We did it, you're not corrupt, that's why they don't watch you.
All right, we're not having commentary from the audience.
Uh, you know what? He has the floor right now.
As far as-
You can speak after he's through.
Yeah, please, please, follow, you know, instructions.
All right, go on.
Okay, my, uh, someone mentioned, you know, about, uh, Mr. Mike, you know, let, let me, no, 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 please don't talk, let me-
Sir, you're out of order.
Uh, no, please, let me speak, you know.
Sir, you're out of order. Let the mayor speak.
No, let, let Chair, you know, take care.
Chief, chief, can you remove him?
No, 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 you cannot talk. It's, she's chairing, you know. Ma'am, you can, no, 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 don't, please.
If you continue to speak out, we're going to have to ask you to leave.
No, wait, please, wait, okay.
Aight.
Okay, let me, let me speak, you know, please. Uh, smoking room, hundred twenty, five thousand dollar plus. I closed that, no smoking, I put no smoking sign over there. And we will decide, board will decide what they will do with that, you know, but it's not for smoking, uh, not anymore smoke room, you know. They did not open mouth because they were, they, they were working with different mayor. Because this mayor is bringing changes, bringing, saving money, and Mr. Mike mentioned about, you know, my car, a, a, a village car, and, uh, property, I mean, uh, car, at this, you know, I'm using, uh, for where I am attending, you know, I go for village. Uh, I represent village in different, uh, places. I go to different business for village, village business, I take that car. And as I mentioned, I do not use for my personal use. My credit cards statement, those are, I will ask, request, you know, Mr. Bailey, you know, how much I am, uh, my, I'm using credit card, village credit card, please speak like for one minute, you know.
I will acknowledge, Mayor, that you have not abused the credit card.
Thank you very much. That's village assistant, uh, acting village administrator. I'm not using, you know.
Can I speak?
No, no, wait, no. Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
I do, Dan? All right, now you can get up to the podium and speak.
Sir, you, you need the concurrence of the majority of the board to speak. You do not have that.
Can we ask him?
Is anybody making a motion to allow him to speak?
Please sit down, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, please sit down, thank you.
I'll remind you guys during election time, you can run your shenanigans, election time is where you guys get hurt. There's not enough people here to back you guys up. Keep doing your corrupt political stuff.
Sit down.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, they're trying to assassinate you.
Uh, you know, now people know, you know, resident know what's going on. Yes, yeah, I know.
Yeah. These are friends of friends.
I'm fine, I'm fine. I mean, uh, I mentioned about car, that's just for village business. I, uh, someone mentioned about, uh, credit card. Uh, Mr. Uh, Doug Flynn, he mentioned there's no bill on my, uh, credit card. And I want to add one more thing, a lot of time I take visitors uh, who come as a own village business, I take them for lunch or dinner, I pay from my personal card. That's what I'm doing. I'm saving village money, I'm saving money for, of my resident. You can compare my statement, uh, village card statement with former mayor or any like that, you know. or any like that, you know. So if somebody can prove I take any, a single penny as a bribe, I will resign, you know. It's open, I will resign same time. Anybody can say, you know, I, I'm abusing or I am taking a one penny from anybody on village business, I will resign right away. I'm talking on the board, I'm talking before everybody. Thank you very much.
Spoken like a truth.
Aight. We're gonna continue, I think Mohammed, you have the next thing.
Yeah, there's one more thing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just wanna clarify because you probably have seen the, the news report and my picture was in there and I've been on top of the town. My wife has been receiving a lot of calls from her friends, say, your husband bite, does your husband bite? And, uh, and she's trying to explain them, no, he doesn't, so they are asking, really, I mean, this is what in the news is that I bite, and it's not just bite. Uh, the, 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 in the police report, it says it's because the investigator asked what kind of bite, so it's a bumblebee bite. So, so basically, the, what I've been accused of and what I, I've been, because this is, what I wanna clarify is that this police report is not launched by me. It's basically against me. And what Mr. Bear wants is, he put in allegations that I threatened him to bite. And when police investigator and the county investigator asked what kind of bite, it's a bumblebee bite. So basically, I tried to bite him and then it was proven that he was lying, he was falsifying, and then he even tried to uh, force our police chief, he tried to influence, and I commend Mr. Pappas for his professionalism. And there was investigation done by, not by the department, but, uh, the county, the Bayes County Department, their investigator, and they are the one who indicted Mr. Coker, not me. It's, it's their decision, they found out that he's been lying and that's why they charged him twice. So I just wanna clarify that. Uh, beside all this crazy stuff, um, I, it's, it's a sad moment for me just to see, because, you know, Mr. Coker is, belongs to the same country as I am. And I really don't wanna represent my country in such a form that him and me are, so what is the difference? The difference is that I see the things, I, I, while I get along with all the other, um, board members, I never found them that they are harsh to me or they disrespect me or they are racist or whatever, while I get along. And, and they're like me, I love them, they are like my family. I mean, I, I've worked with them and I have no issues whatsoever. So it's, 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 it's kind of sad just to see, uh, these things and now, uh, I was a subject of a lawsuit, which I'm still fighting in the court. Not only this, my extended family, my wife's sister, husband and her kid, who has nothing to do with this, also, Mr. Coker included them in the lawsuit. So these things are still going on in the court, but I think I should take a moment and try to explain it to you that this report is not initiated by me, but by the DuPage County Attorney Office. If you have any questions, go and ask them, why did they indict Mr. Coker? And again, I do not bite. Thank you.
Aight.
For clarification, uh, Chief, after this indictment, did I mention or did I talk about this with you anytime?
Mayor, we're not gonna talk about that case. Not gonna.
I mean, my question is different, did I talk?
Mayor.
Yes or no?
No, we're not gonna talk about this case, okay?
Mayor, I had a respondent person filed a complaint against.
Yes, Bill.
Motion to adjourn.
And they sent the police.
Sir, please come to the mic if you want to.
He was so scared, he dropped the investigation. Just so you know, Mayor, you're not the only one. Antonio Pacheco, sixteen fifty-nine Larry Lane was also.
You're out of order, please, you're out of order.
Project, let Chair take care of this. You make a lot of noise.
We should do adjourn.
You are not.
Peter. Peter, what? I make a motion to adjourn.
You always make wrong motion, you know.
I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Please, Chair, let, let her take care, you know.
Aight. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.